And Lucille LeBlanc, who operate Tuscan Island Tours, are actually going to be getting a different boat, operating it from the waterfront, doing a tour of the harbor, and then lobster, savour the sea lobster experience at the Yarmouth Bar. So, we've done a dry run on that, captured some marketing around it, and actually it's going to be a great thing. It was quite cold that day, but we did manage to get some photography there, so.
July and August, Neil, is it going to be more June, July, August? How's it going to be?
Sorry?
For the harbor tours?
Yeah, well, the expectation there, and we're still putting some logistics together on that, but the expectation there was that that would run very closely to the ferry schedule. But right now, I think we're looking at, if you were to force me to answer that, I'd say June 15th to, or as early as we can get to June 1st to September 15th to September 30th, depending on the market, too, so.
That's awesome.
We did savour the sea last year at the lighthouse, for example, as a test, a new product. Getting off topic here, but that's got about 100 people, 33 locals, and then the rest were all visitors. And so we know visitors are looking for that type of experience, seaside experience, and we're really happy with something happening in the harbor because the hotels are very much on side because that's something they can sell as well. And it's excellent for walk-on passengers, which I know Bay Fairies is trying to promote, so.
Love it. So... I'm sorry, Wade?
No, go ahead.
The can's right behind your computer.
I just wanted to ask, when most of these actual niche cruise ships, once you book them coming in, how do these passengers book these experiences individually? Do they do it off of the website? How does that work?
So, there's two processes in how that's done. You can, either when you book the cruise yourself, you can actually book these excursions at the time of purchase when you book the cruise, or when you get off the boat, or when they go into port, they actually, well, there'll be a cruise operator who will actually book them at the time when they land, or people will actually get off the boat with no plans, and that's an opportunity to actually to sell them experiences that they don't even know exist, so that they haven't pre-sold them.
Okay, so once they come off the boat, do we have something there to kind of greet them and kind of lead them?
Well, that's one of the things we need to talk about, and I wanted to mention in the presentation, absolutely, yeah. So, since we're talking about niche markets, so basically, guests sailing on niche market cruises are looking for authentic engaging experiences in ports that they visit. Often, they are more active and well-travelled, and what they're looking for from their cruise experience and their shoreside experiences are wow experiences, so things that they can brag about, share on social media, be able to tell people that they've done and others haven't, opportunities to learn, personal growth, bragging rights, hands-on experiences, having fun and being entertained, value for time, value for money. So, for example, the experience here with the harbor, the opportunity to learn about the history of Yarmouth, get a little bit water on your face, lightly, you know, light experiences, and then also have authentic Nova Scotia seafood at Oceanside with Mackenzie School of Dance performing for you, entertaining. We also have our Living Worts experiences, which are all tied into this. So, our brand and our marketing is really tied in with what these niche cruise travelers are looking for already, so we see that as really good alignment as well. So, as part of the analysis that we did with Aquila Tours, when we did the session here back in January, we did a SWOT analysis of the port, and some of the things that we learned, which was good, there was about 22 people came to that session, I think Jimmy were there, I don't remember if anyone else was there. There was about 22 people, they made up of lots of stakeholders from the port, of course, and from the area. And what we determined is that the port of Yarmouth is well-positioned operationally to accommodate cruise ships with the established wharf, ISPs, which is the International Ship and Port Facility Security. They have good security, they have insurance, they have risk management plans, et cetera. In addition, we are well-positioned to close on the New England market, and we're in the heart of the New England cruise arena. And also, the port of Yarmouth has CBSA on-site at the terminal, and is established as a port that can easily accommodate being the first port of arrival in Canada, ship stock alongside already, in the heart of the downtown area, and wayfinding and directional signage is good, and recently been improved. The port of Yarmouth has some flexibility for scheduling with two potential berths for small ships, although one is preferable, and they have successfully worked alongside other port users, such as fishing industry, obviously, to successfully host small cruise ships. History of successful business to the area, as I said, we've already had some ships arrive, with several niche market cruise lines, both exceptionally operationally at the port and with regards to the guest experience. We have a wide variety of unique and authentic tourism products in the region, and several opportunities within walking distance, which is great, along with access to nature experiences such as sea hiking, hiking trails, the lighthouse, our heritage district, learning opportunities, cultural experiences, shopping, and that are all well-suited to this cruise market. Weaknesses. So, some of the weaknesses we recognize is that maximum ship sizes alongside at the port are no more than 500 feet, harbor's narrow and shallow, potential for conflict with other users, for example, the fishing industry, we have to be wary of that. Greg Shea mentioned that in his presentation during the waterfront symposium as well, we have to make sure we navigate that. Potential for conflict with other users, such as obviously the fisheries and the cat as well, or other fairies. And terminal infrastructure is quite aged and needs improvement, and there is no facilities at the government wharf, specifically bathrooms or services for cruise guests at this point. The opportunities, location is close proximity to New England, and to where ships are already currently sailing in the Canada-New England region, forecasting industry growth, which we already mentioned, and especially in the niche cruise market. This is a great opportunity for lengthening the season, we always talk about the shoulder seasons in our tourism industry. Everyone's trying to make their money within the three months or four months of the year, and then the rest of the year, they're trying to keep the doors open. So, we're really trying to extend that season as much as possible. Every destination in Nova Scotia, and certainly Canada, is trying to do the tactics that will help do that. We see niche cruise market as an opportunity to do that because they actually are in the region at times when we're actually ramping down some of our tourism market already. There's potential for new products and packages, and for cruise, an opportunity to extend those new products from cruise market to other markets, such as ferry visitors and travel trade, and it's a safe, affordable, and uncrowded destination. Again, components that we use in our marketing already. Threats, it is a competitive market, there is competition with other ports in the region, for example, Shelburne and Digby are both niche cruise ports, and we have similar attributes to other ports in the region and on the itinerary. For example, lots of places in Nova Scotia have lighthouses, and there's lighthouses all throughout the land of Canada, and into Maine as well. These cruise market lines often have fewer vessels in their fleet, so they may move vessels around more, returning to the region every two to three years instead of every year. So, it's a long-term game, potential conflicts with local users, et cetera, again, fishing industry. Expectations, typically, the cruise industry is looking for their itineraries and asks these questions 18 to 24 months ahead, and as mentioned to Sandy Dennis before, this is a long game, and we've just entered this market starting in January, really. We have made some good progress already, but it is an 18 to 24-month move. And they are making, the cruise line operators are making these determinations based on what they believe they can sell to the guests. So, they want to have experiences that are in the area that they believe their guests are interested in, and they know their guests, they know what they're, how, you know, they've done the research to attract their guests to actually book their cruise, so they know what their guests are interested in, so we have to try to focus our experiences and products to what that niche market on the guests that are already traveling on the boats, on the vessels have. And we can do that, I mean, again, a lot of the stuff that they're looking for is nature experiential, but we just have to be really hyper-focused on being able to give the cruise operators something that they can sell to their guests, and that's going to take some development. Cruise line expectations, they expect that the port of call must be able to be strategically located within the itinerary, which we are, and be reached overnight in another port, preferably within 200-mile radius of the mass-market ships, although smaller ships will consider less of a radius. Appeal, the port must have also, sorry, the port of call must have an appeal to the cruise line's target market, I just mentioned a little bit about that. The crews will consider whatever or not the destination is well-marketed. It is, it represents a strong brand, and if it has developed a favorable consumer perception. I think we've made a lot of endroads in that over the last five years, especially with establishing a tourism destination with Yarmouth and Decade and Shores, and so I think we're moving in the right direction there. Ease in navigating the port, the cruise line will consider, if the port is able to accommodate its ships, the depth of the harbor, channel constraints and approach, and dock availability in passengers and cargo. And infrastructure, the expectation is that the categories, this category do vary, depend on the cruise line, but generally speaking, cruise lines are looking for quality transportation, coaches and taxis, which we can't have an issue with here, qualified shore excursion providers, that is growing, port agents, welcome area at the port, reasonable prices, and good language skills. Logistics, again, the considerations here can be many and varied, but will often include the region's conditions, setting schedules, fees and expectations, signage dispatching area for transportation, transferring guests to and from the ship, tender issues, for example, in gangways, common weather conditions that may affect the call, or any issues that may mean missing the port. They also are concerned about port amenities and attractions, the guest welcome is really important, too, that's something we have a lot of control over and we can grow. Cruise lines do expect that their guests will receive a warm and genuine welcome in the ports they visit. Increasingly, they expect visitor information, especially maps, to be available, pier-side, and volunteers to answer questions, that can be very valuable for this when it happens, when the visitors happen.
Neil, when we had the downtown, or the waterfront symposium the other night, did you bring up or kind of try to incorporate into the things that you suggested here, the things that they need with the group?
I did, I didn't stay for the whole time, but when I was doing one of the roundtable sessions with my group, I did mention that we need to certainly take advantage of the niche market that's there, yeah.
And I think Counselor Cleveland has another idea about, I think, which would be fairly close to where the cruise ship would be, that he has another idea for another added amenity on the waterfront, maybe?
Well, yeah, there is that. I was thinking about developing the marginal wharf as a live music venue to some degree, and I'm playing with that right now, doing some work on it, but that would be another issue, to me at least, where does the cruise ships dock? Would they dock at the marginal wharf? Is that one of the spots?
They could. You're talking about the government wharf, right? And then the...
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure.
You can't put a cruise ship in marginal?
No.
No.
What's, I'm thinking about the other one, the one further south.
Yeah, the one where Redfist took place.
No, you couldn't dock there.
You couldn't dock there anyway, so it wouldn't be an issue having a live venue.
But, there is a need for, there is a need for a welcome area, dedicated welcome area, that's one of the things in the moving forward piece we need to talk about and develop, is we need a welcome program that is something that can be consistently deployed every time there is a ship.
Well, see, yeah, that area itself, you could put that together with it, and again...
Yeah, so, part of your venue could be a space that was dedicated, or multi-use space that could be used for a welcome program.
Could also be a kickoff area for, if you needed, required a shuttle for whatever you were doing, or whatever. Shuttles would also be an issue at this point, because the shuttles aren't there, but if this went well, I would see an opportunity for a shuttle area that could grab these people and take them wherever they wanted to go.
Right, so some will want to just walk and explore the town, go get something to eat. There's also an opportunity for crew, so a lot of the crew of these vessels actually want to get off the boat, do laundry, go get something to eat, get some other supplies, for example. So, there's an opportunity to be there, that's not necessarily specifically to tourism, but it's definitely, it's bringing people in the community, and they're spending money as well. So, there's just another niche component to that. But, the welcome program is something that is important. Rick actually went to Picto to see their welcome program when one of the ships was in, he was there last month. He said he wasn't extremely impressed by their welcome program, and his feedback was that we can do a really much better job of what they're doing currently, but really, what they're looking for is, yeah, a dedicated staging area, they're looking for organization, they don't want their guests to be confused, they want their guests to have options, so here's where you get on your tours, here's where you can decide, here's some other opportunities for you, for example, a walking tour, guided walking tour you can take, or here's a map of the town with the areas for retail and food and drink, you know. They just want to be able to have those choices, and they want their guests to be safe, and they also don't want their guests to be hazardous, either, so.
Which means everybody has to be on board, you can't give them a retail brochure unless the retailers are open.
Right, so that's one of the pieces that needs to be worked out, is when the ships are here, it would be wonderful, for example, if we could somehow know ahead of time, which we do now, because, for example, we know one's coming in the spring, know ahead of time to let the farmers market know. Maybe they could be open on a specific day other than Saturday, related to the ferry, and then there could be an excursion related to that, so.
Right on.
Or obviously, retail being open at the same time, people in the community knowing the importance of when the ship comes in, these guests are going to be wanted to be treated as well as we treat current visitors, you know?
Another thing that is your purpose in this particular setup, when it comes to welcoming, is the idea that we, right now, have an app that would give you a walking tour, perhaps we could, using that same platform, come up with one that would give you guidance to retail areas, where you're going, what opportunities are there for whatever adventure you happen to want. We already have a platform in place that we could actually utilize right now, which would be very useful, but they could just put on their smartphone.
So, things like a good Wi-Fi in the area in the downtown is definitely a selling feature, it's a piece of infrastructure that a visitor coming in is going to go, "Oh, I have Wi-Fi, this is great," you know what I mean? That's an added value thing that we can help sell and promote. Certainly, a clear map of, here's the retail spaces, even deckles on doors for retail, you know, welcome this ship, for example, or just retail knowing, you know, when someone walks in, and they might look not strange, but they look like maybe they're not from here, and we'd say, you know, "Did you just come on the, you know, XYZ ship? Welcome," you know, that kind of thing, it's real simple. So, next steps, moving forward, we need to, what we've done since January is GASTA has become a member of the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association, which was one of the steps we had to do to be considered a port of call for small cruise ships and for tourism Nova Scotia to actually market our port. We had to take part in a cruise readiness session, which we did over two days. We also attended the Canada New England Cruise Symposium, June 13th to 15th in Montreal, met a lot of the cruise executives who operate the ships and sell passengers, or, sorry, go after passengers and make connections with destinations like us. We met with many cruise executives there, and we also started relationships with these cruise lines, so we're making sales calls, we're developing relationships, and a lot of them are quite happy that we're calling, they're glad that we're in the mix now, and they're not hanging up the phone on the call, that's for sure. So, next steps, we have to establish a cruise committee, there's been, I have to say, there hasn't been any pushback with this at all, there's been nothing but support, the chamber, commerce is on board, obviously, the town is on board, and GASTA, and a lot of our operators want to take part, so really, creating a cruise committee, we'll figure out what that's going to look like, but really, the role of that committee will be to kind of focus in on developing this market and what needs to happen. So, for example, the mayor mentioned retail and getting them on-site, well, maybe that's a piece that the chamber can play, and try to express that need, well, you need to be open in the ships here, et cetera, so. Establish a welcoming and send-off procedure, so, Picto, for example, always has a piper. We have lots of opportunity to do things like that, but wouldn't it be great if we actually had a, when the ship's coming in, we have a piper, or we have some Acadian music, or we have something that is entertaining them, even like the memorial club, you know, down there with their flags, every time there's a ship like that comes in, because they're not coming in so often that it would be logistically difficult, if you plan ahead. We need to continue to make sales calls, which we're doing, develop a communications plan, develop sales and marketing tools. I shared a little bit of our piece of collateral that we used when we went to the show last year, we just developed something quite quickly, but we learned a lot, actually, the cruise executives don't want something like this, they'd rather have something really small or a flash drive, so we're going to change our tactics. They did like this, but we learned a lot. And we're going to attend more shows and keep developing the relationships and try to keep going after people to come here. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Neil. We'll take as many as we can get. Go ahead, Jim.
Neil, do we have any ships at all hoping or planning to be here next summer?
There is, I don't know the name of the ship, forgive me, but there is a ship coming in the spring this year, yeah, there's one. And we may learn of them, you know, over the winter as well, more ships that are planning on coming.
Sure.
Yeah.
As part of the work of the committee that you're forming or have formed?
I can't say that the ship that's coming in the spring was something, was 100% related to our work, I think it was, probably would have happened anyway, but we have, now we have the opportunity to actually develop experiences and itineraries for that ship, where we wouldn't have before. So, for example, when we weren't part of the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association, they wouldn't really talk to us in the same way that we would want to, so they would just push us off to Atlantic Canada Cruise Association members, and now we have that opportunity to do that, so.
Good for you guys, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks.
Any more questions for Neil?
Good job.
Yeah, keep going, great work. Staff report, CAO.
Your worship, my report was late getting ready, so it's in paper copy on your desk. It consists of the various motions approved by council and the status of those, there weren't many from last month, the completed ones are on the back sheet, and the ones that are partially, or I guess partially completed are the first two sheets, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them now or at your leisure.
Questions for CAO?
Your worship, we just got them today, would think that we would just take this and look at it, and any questions we have, we raise at the regular meeting.
Right on. Good. He almost turned his light up. Fire department, welcome, chief.
I have a question. I'm pretty sure it was. I forget to see a little meeting anyway, right?
Good, anything for the chief? Nice banquet there a couple weeks ago?
Yes, I've heard of it.
It did, yeah. A lot of service.
Yeah.
Wow, good stuff. Okay, thanks for the report, chief. Planning department, got that, if anyone wants to call, Morris. Asset management and infrastructure renewal report. That's new. Hmm? It's awesome. Finance.
How are we doing, Jared?
I just put the...
Thanks, Neil.
Good, Neil.
The one-page summary of both the town and the water utility operations, they're on your desk there, it's kind of business as usual. The kind of the variances that are both show in the bottom numbers under fiscal services, and that's the capital and town side, and then the capital of revenue, of course, is a lot higher than budget in the water utility, but what we do with the town and the utility is we pay for all of our capital, and then towards the end of the year, when things are summarized, we move some of the funding around from our capital funds and our reserve funds, that kind of stuff, or gas tax funds, so those don't get moved till towards the end of the year and the projects are done or completed, so that's where the variance show up throughout the year. Other than that, it's been business as usual for the finance area.
Any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
You were too quick for me, I was wanting to thanks and congratulate Dave on all the activity of the water sewer structure upgrade, and it's my favorite part of the operation, I think, of the town of Yarmouth, so it's good to see it going, and it's going well, I think, Dave, isn't it, at this point? Yeah, no, so I just wanted to say thanks very much, I see you on the job, and that sort of thing, so, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. I'm looking at engineer's report, and I was looking for the asset management, that's why we...
I should have changed the name of it by the word, I guess.
Right, that's why we went so quickly by that, but yeah, lots of good being done. Yarmouth Recreation. Go ahead, there, Counselor Hood.
I had something for David. David, I had a thought, and that is this, that to get the best bang for the buck, now that we've separated the sanitary and storm sewerage on Cliff, we ought to have a program that the next minor projects we do would be on each of the side streets going north and south, I would think start with Seminary and on down over the next several years, that's the ones we need to get, because they're, with the Cliff Street job, we now have the ability to separate and channel those side streets down, wherever the ones flow by gravity to Cliff.
Yeah, not all the side streets flow into Cliff Street, but, yeah, Park and William don't, I don't think, but in Thurston goes the other way, but yes, there's several of them we could separate out.
Climate's part of it, anyway. Okay, good.
Go ahead.
Just picking up on a detail that Cliff mentioned, Dave, I noticed on Sunday, when we turned the water off on Cliff Street, that maybe so-called water hammer caused a leak on the corner, approaching the corner of William and Forest, and I looked at the pipe that was there on Forest Street, and the pipe is four inches thick or in diameter, there was only about a half an inch or an inch of water able to go through it, so it was appropriate that it be repaired, and maybe that could be a next street that we could look at.
That's been one street we identified as being in need of replacement, yes.
You're welcome. Anything else for Dave, or, okay, economic development report. Natalie's out, but she's always right upstairs if anyone has questions. Okay, so the Get Involved Yarmouth, 852 visits, that must have been in a month, or, no, two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. I just noticed the people with questions aren't asking the questions on there, it's a shame. Business, request for decision, fire apparatus, budget increase. CAO.
Thank you, your worship, so when we set our capital budget, I want to say, two years ago, we included an apparatus that would in fact replace two vehicles with the fire department. We went through, we had requests for proposals, processed, tender process, the department selected a vendor, they built the truck, they delivered it, and as you'll recall, it failed to meet the weight requirement and was not roadworthy, was returned to the vendor, and left us in a position, still without a truck, and in need, so what happened, or not what happened, but the specification that was used in the past, and John, please correct me if I'm wrong, was we were looking for a truck, and what was proposed and accepted was a truck outfitted with a fire package, so it wasn't a fire truck built as a fire truck, it was a general-purpose truck adapted as a fire truck, and that's where some of the problems came in. So, what the fire department would like to do, excuse me, is actually purchase a custom-built heavy rescue fire truck. It would have the same operational capabilities, perhaps more than the one that was specified before, but it would be built as a fire truck from the chassis out. And so, they've done some scanning, I guess, of the recent purchases of fire apparatus, and they feel that the truck is likely to cost as much as $200,000 more than what the budget presently permits. So, rather than go to tender and come to you after the results are in, they're asking for a budget allocation ahead of issuing the tender. The specification is ready, but they didn't want to issue it unless they knew the money was going to be there, acting in good faith. So, the request to you is to increase the allocation for that truck by $200,000. I can tell you that in terms of our capital budget, we always have a situation where we don't get all the money out the door in the fiscal year that it's approved, and part of that is that we do budget a fair amount of, a fair number of projects, a lot of them small, all of them require design, work specifications being developed, tenders being issued, and then having contractors deliver the work or the equipment. So, my feeling is, is that we can and should... So my feeling is, is that we can, we can and should allocate the extra $200,000 to this. They've been, this is almost three years, John, that they've been waiting for this replacement vehicle. And John has a plan in terms of the use of his volunteers that this vehicle will, will make, I guess, given the capability of, of implementing. And as far as the, where the money will come from, because of the cash flow situation that we have and not completing projects in, in the year in which they're budgeted, and that's just a workload issue, I feel that we can make the adjustment here or make the allocation here during our budget process, which is coming up. We'll have to bump something back a year, but I don't know that we'll actually feel that impact because of the cash flow issue that we, that we find ourselves in. So the recommendation is, is to make the additional, the additional allocation and permit them to go ahead with the procurement process.
Make that a motion, your worship.
Go ahead there.
I think I'm good.
Somebody out here first and then it'll be.
Sure, just a question Jeff and/or John. Would possibly TriStar be consideration for help in this area? Just thinking out loud.
Try, I can answer that. TriStar hasn't built one of these types of trucks before, specific before fire in a heavy rescue. They have built ambulances and smaller vehicles and they actually also built a tanker before. Actually, I think it was beginning of this year, I approached them to find out if they could start building fire trucks, but they would have to have a number of fire chiefs order some. So right now, if they had the capability and we put the tender out, they definitely would bid on it, right? But whether they can do it or not is, is up in the air, right?
Question, your worship?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Wow, thank you very much, everybody. That's really going to be good. Thanks.
Now that that's passed, I just, just wanted to mention this. There's, there's a, a need with the fire, within the fire department to raise some funds. We're doing some fundraising for the, for the hall itself that some of the volunteers have approached me to, to help them out with. And one thing I want to mention, and this, the volunteers did this themselves, it has nothing to do with me, but I would like to point, thank you, I would like to point out the, the fact that right now, the Yarmouth Fire Department is in the middle of a little photo contest which is going on. It was put on by an insurance group. I'm not sure what the name of the group is.
Yeah, I can't offhand.
Offhand, I can't tell you. But what it is, they've, they've done this beautiful picture. I have it on my Facebook page and I'd love it if the rest of the council would share this as well. Because every time this picture of the group of volunteer fire depart, firefighters in front of a fire engine in front of the Cape Four Shu Lighthouse, every time it gets a like, that counts towards the contest. And the one who gets the most likes actually wins $5,000 towards the department.
Monroe Insurance.
It's easy, it's cheap. A A Monroe Insurance is the name. But you can find the link on my Facebook page. Hopefully, we can spread that around as much as we possibly can. You know how Yarmouth gets involved in these kind of things, so I'd like to see that happen.
Yep.
Facebook, Facebook's the way, man. If you could very much, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you, John.
Good stuff. Downtown, downtown train.
Worship.
Thank you. I think I might do a, I'll take that off and I'll see if anybody wants to look back at the Chronicle Herald
Yeah.
on Tuesday, October the 24th. And we'll have an opportunity to speak to our municipal counterparts at the U N S M in two weeks. And maybe we'll talk to Mayor Mills and Nancy, is it Nix? Yeah.
Nancy Dix.
Nancy Dix, yeah. They're, they're looking, they're looking at the opportunity to do something with this.
Okay.
So maybe we'll ask those guys in their, in their process to see where they are and then we'll go from there. How's that?
Good stuff. Thank you. Okay, so correspondence for action. Yarmouth Central School Advisory Committee reparking. So we have a request here. What's that?
Is curling club on there or is that coming later? That's under discussion.
Yeah. The request is from the chair of the school advisory committee who is talking about the parking at Yarmouth Central School. And he gives a couple options, lower part of the school's property, which means it takes away from their space. And the other one is for us to use the former high school. I think the third one is the old church parking lot because it's right there. So, and the Zion Baptist Church is right there. It's empty. It's been paid for years, for a couple of years at least.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. It's, it's lovely.
Is that the third? I looked at the two.
I would, I mean, I, we can discuss.
Who owns the, who owns the parking lot, C A O, the old high school parking lot? Does that belong to us but not for much longer, right?
Much, yeah.
Yeah, we, we own that and presently, you know, we could allow that to be used. But it, it is under a purchase-sale agreement. And if that closes, then it's no longer our property and that's hopefully not far off.
So that's, that option's off the table then, right?
I, I just, there's, there's a parking lot right there.
Talk to the owner and if he isn't moving ahead too quick, he might be able to use it for a period of time.
It's not, I don't think it's that one. It's the, the big parking lot. That's, that's owned by the school board now. Yeah.
It is?
Can we? Can we just, yeah, go ahead. I'm just understanding why they can't just go where there's a place that's.
So the, the issue with the parking is that the, the parking lot, the former high school parking lot, the main lot, is going to be within the construction fence.
Yeah, exactly.
And so they've been using that for their parking.
Yeah, the lay-down area.
Yeah.
Right? So now they're displaced from there. They're looking for a place to go. So immediate, they're just scanning and they see the our parking lots, which, you know, might get sold. They see their land at the bottom of their property, which it'd be a shame to see go that way. But then, you're right, the church parking lot is across the street.
How much parking we got out of the fire hall? Cut a, cut a place in that mega gate in the, in the fence, they cut a great, they could park there and walk right across the school.
It's not our fence, but.
So, so does, does the, the field go with?
The field, the provinces.
Anyway, they could park there and walk around.
Or do Design Baptist Church?
I see, I see the chief is cringing, so we could discuss that.
They're not going to walk the two blocks.
Well, how are their Yark members?
Sandy, were you going to?
I was just going to point out in our previously distributed, we got a letter from the museum stating that there was a concern expressed at their meeting that town, the town parking lot on Parade Street may be used to such an extent that not enough space will remain available for the museum.
How much, how many people go to the museum at a time?
I don't know. I just wanted to bring it to your attention since we got that letter.
Was it the museum? Did the museum own that parking lot?
Well, that's what I thought today.
So, so the museum, Zion Church gave the, the land to the museum. The museum agreed to allow us to use the parking lot for public parking.
Yeah, it's not ours.
It's free public parking. It doesn't belong to us, but they've allowed us to use it for free public parking.
Okay. So is the other option to have them talk to the province about finding them more space for education, which is a provincial issue?
You got, you got 50 or more spaces at the fire hall.
But, but.
And a, and a sidewalk to walk around there. Give me a break.
But they're.
I don't know how many spaces you got at the fire hall.
To talk of Central School, it's not, you're not coming up right to the high school. You're coming to the, like, they're going to Central School. They got to come up and around the.
Jesus Jim, you used to walk from Prospect Street for God's sake when you were a kid. I walk from Cliff. Come on, give me a break.
Oh, I hear you. Go ahead, Jim, Jeff.
Yeah, just, those are the options you have that you can offer.
Brand new parking lot in the yard.
They're resourceful. They're resourceful. They will find solutions, but those are two solutions that you could point out.
Okay.
I think if they're, if you're going to offer up the, the fire department yard, I think we owe it to the chief to have a discussion with him about any implications there and where he would like that parking to be. But we, we could have that conversation, offer that up in a letter, just those two possibilities. And like I say, they're, they're resourceful. They'll, they'll discover other options as well.
So the issue is, do they want a new school or parking lot? We can fix that right quick. Just stop building a school and give them a parking lot and continue on.
No, they want the school and the parking.
Yeah, yeah, and.
It's okay. It's just, there's space around there. So you're going to take care of that? Send them a letter and it's, yeah. Okay. All right. Yarmouth Fire Department Veteran Status, Greg Cook. So Mr. Cook has requested veteran status and the chief supports it. Go ahead there, chief. You want to speak to that?
Just to make you's aware that the, the gentleman that's requesting it was a past member. He's not a member now. But he did have the years of service needed to become a veteran. The Veterans Association has already, or the Veterans Association, the Volunteer Firefighter Association already voted on it saying yes. I did check his file and the documentation I found does show that he does have the time. And there is nothing on his file that's detrimental to him, so.
He went away, worked a little bit too, so he's away for a few years. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation for veteran status for Greg Cook.
Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you again.
Yeah, you want anything else there, chief? Okay, additions, and I have.
Three minutes?
Yeah, both that. We've got train on there. I don't know why. That's done. Curling. Who's lights on? Bill's.
So your worship, at the joint council meeting earlier this week, we held, had a presentation from the Yarmouth Curling Club in which they outlined a, a need for equipment replacement, which they have addressed through taking a loan, but they were requesting financial assistance from the three municipal units. They also identified that there are other things that, that in the future, that they will need to replace in order to remain operational at the curling club. And so I'm just bringing that to the table here, that you have that request and seeking direction if you want more information or what you'd like to do with that.
Worship, I'll make a motion for discussion, a move that we contribute $11,665 to their current.
Sixty-seven.
$67 to their current fundraising efforts. And if need be, the next fiscal year, up to $8,337, or $33 if need be. So that gives the opportunity for the other municipal councils to come in at $11,667 each.
Okay. Did you, who was speaking? Okay, go ahead, Jim.
If Cliff wants to go because he's second to the motion, that's okay. I support the motion. But more than that, I think this is an opportunity to assist the curling and golfing club with a possibility of getting all the equipment they need to upgrade their ice making equipment. And maybe also insulate, I think there was discussion about that at the meeting the other night, insulate the appropriate part of the building, which would make the cost of operation less. So I know I've talked about this briefly with you, Jeff, but maybe we could work with the Department of Recreation in getting some funding or grants to assist the golfing and curling club to upgrade their equipment and make it an appropriate building that they could look after for the next period of years. Maybe, maybe for the next 50 years and maybe then after that Cliff and I could come back and go do a curling game. Stick curling. So, so I'm quite, I'm quite serious about this, thinking, thinking of all the funding that we've been asked to participate in, in, in and around the three municipal units and, and to spend, have no idea really, but say up to $200,000 on the refurbishing of equipment and upgrading the building. And a, a good fix for the curlers and the golfers for the next period of years. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
Well, your worship, I'm, I echo what Councilor McLeod had to say. I add to this that in my mind, while I won't say I'm 100% committed to this notion, my notion is that this is a down payment on what will be a refurbishment, complete refurbishment at a relatively modest price compared to some other projections that are out there. And that at a future date, we would be looking at some additional funds, as you suggest, to bring the facility down there up to the standard that may carry it forward 30, 50 years, another life cycle, in other words.
I know we don't echo things here, your worship, but.
You're darn right you don't.
I'll, I'll call for the question, then I'll make a motion on the second part probably to encapsulate what, what's been brought up at the table. I'll call for the question on the first part, your worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Your worship, we'll make a motion that the three municipal councils meet with the Yarmouth Curling Club to assess their future needs. Assess the three municipal councils.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought you said. Okay? Okay, did you second that? Okay, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Jerry, we got $11,667, right? Or I have to get on the phone again?
We'll find it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Harrington High School, you a good deputy to take over? You, would you do me a favor and just text or send me a note if you're done in there, so I don't come back?
Dwayne, can I have a do?
No. Maybe a question to the C A O and to Councilhood is his role on P V S C. How the new high school development will be taxed, how does that get determined and who gets to determine it? It's not the town of Yarmouth, right?
So the, the sale is conditional on a, a development agreement that as everyone knows at this point, would be for residential purposes. And so P V S C upon the sale of the, of the property, we can advise them, but I'm sure the, the new owner would advise them that the property is, is now residential. And they would consider changing the, the property from commercial to, to residential. And they would probably also review the, the assessment on it. Now, that wouldn't happen until the new, the new tax year, which is actually going to coincide fairly nicely with the sale. So it is P V S C's decision in terms of how much it's assessed for and whether it's commercial or residential. But I believe based on the condition on the sale agreement that they'll be convinced that it will be a residential property.
So the first year, if they had 20 units, they'd base it on 20 units. They're up and going.
If they have 20 units up and running and occupy, able to be occupied, then they would be assessed based on 20 occupiable units. The remainder of the building would, would also get a value placed on it. And how they determine that, it's, it's not usable, but maybe work in progress. You know, they'd put a number on it. As an example, the, the Annapolis Royal, former junior high school was, was sold for. junior high school, was sold for $25,000, was assessed at just over $300,000, and the new owners took out a mortgage of about 3.5 million on the property. So, you know, what's the value of it?
Yeah.
Right? Is it what it was sold for, what it was assessed for, or what someone was able to.
Mortgage for.
Mortgage for. So they, it's a tough call because they're purpose-built buildings, and people buy them with ideas of changing them. So while it's in that process of being changed from the former use to the new use, it's a bit of a trick to try and put a proper value on it.
Okay. And the other question, I think, and we had the discussion yesterday at the Heritage, CAO, is a property that is being repurposed or reused for something else, or is going from residential to some part of maybe a medical clinic. It could be massage, therapy, it could be something. So we do not have any control over what that's designated as. We just put the use in, and then they take care of the rest?
Right. So whether it's a development permit or a development agreement, if part of a building is used residential and part of a building is used commercial, then PVSC applies the appropriate assessment class to the portions of the property that are either used for the business or used for the residence.
Okay.
So same as a downtown, you know, Main Street building might have commercial on the ground floor, but residential upstairs, so they would have two assessments.
Anything on that, Councilor? Are you good?
I'm speechless.
[laughing]
But I would think it's a transition. You've got a transition period, and it, you know, at the first of it, you're not going to get a lot of taxes. They have to, I would think, they have to complete work. It's the same, look, if you come in here and get a development permit to build an extension on your house, when you finish the extension, that following year, they will pick that up and go ahead and put it on the roll, I think. It depends on how early, you know, when you get it done.
Yeah, that's right.
In the year.
And Jeff, the CAO said this could follow quite nicely with the timelines on how PVSC comes in.
But on the.
Does their inspections.
Yeah, on the taxing side, are you sure it's just residential? It would be taxed just at the residential? It will be taxed the same as any other commercial residential if they're charging rents, right?
Well, if, I'm just thinking about, let's say the transaction closed January 1st, and they have a development agreement to, that restricts the use of the property to residential, then they'd have a pretty good case, I would think, to go to PVSC and say, this should be reclassified as residential. It's the only use it can be put to, even though its past was what you've hoped.
They, yeah.
But because there's a structure there, it has a value, but it's a structure that isn't converted yet, so.
They can, they have other ways of assessing. And what they do is, they can take another approach, which is sort of based on the income and the expenses and the profit, and they can gross that up to a number for value. It's one of the indicators they can use when they try to establish market value. Eventually, they're supposed to end up at market value.
Good. Perfect. I think the only other thing we had, Councilor McLeod.
Jeff, I only realized yesterday that one of the items that you mentioned earlier, former Councilor Ken Landrell's home, is no, you know, he's, the new owner, the possible new owners are no longer going to, they feel they're not eligible, or they can't occupy the home under the conditions they had hoped to. And I thought that, and I had a call into Morse Lloyd, our planner, and I haven't had a chance to speak with him yet today, so I'll probably have a conversation with him tomorrow. But I think the sale has been, is no longer there, that the home is, you know, that Jordan, young Jordan Landrell is, it'd be on the market again, from what I briefly understand at our meeting yesterday of the Historical Committee, Heritage Committee.
Yeah, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what's happened there. I haven't talked to Morse to know from his end if he knows about the circumstances that's caused, what I understand is, the sale to not be, fall through with.
Okay. Woodland Multi-Use Trail Association, I believe, CAO, that the mayor was going to meet with the local ATV groups?
So I think you're asking about the connection of the two trails, so.
Yes, and I think the only thing is, I had a conversation with Sherman Embry today, who's a former, former.
I remember Sherman.
Former, yeah, former Swaziland member, myself. Former warden of the municipality of District of Shawburn would just like to be, he's doing some work. I think he's the chair of their association, would just like to be invited to the talk, that's all.
No problem. So let me give you a quick update on where we are with that. I asked Dave to, or Dave to get a map prepared by our GIS technician that shows, we talked about the small gauge road and some possibilities there. So Dave and I had a discussion yesterday, spread the map out on my desk, and it seemed to me that there's a fairly reasonable possibility of a good solution. So we'll bring together a meeting with members of council, members of transportation infrastructure renewal will be critical to be there. Dave and members of the ATV Association, if Mr. Embry is able to make it.
One of their representatives?
Certainly, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
But it looked fairly promising, looking at the map and understanding, you know, who owns some of the land. I think something can be done.
Good. Thank you. You'll keep us updated on that? I don't think we have any other council business. We have a motion to go in camera for Avens Report Media and Chamber? Make a motion, we accept. You have a question on any of the previously distributed, or just want to?
[inaudible].
Is that the commitment we made for the?
Yeah, so we were paying out of, it was just a pledge to the date?
Yes.
We would just pay that as a, as a motion, and no conditions, talk to, with the budget and the capital budget.
Motion to accept previously distributed. I think Councilor Hood did it. Second one, Councilor McLeod?
I'm missing. I'll put it down, sorry.
The, motion to. Motion to accept the previously distributed correspondence.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion to go in camera.